Four weeks ago, we were meeting here. Little did we know that we would not see Jana Short again. She was rushed to the hospital that afternoon as she was working and passed away earlier than the next morning. She was a special person. She was a friend, a colleague, to everyone in this room. She was a dedicated and devoted wife and husband, Trent, her three children, Grace, Henry, and Helen. She will be missed by all. For those of who had the pleasure of working with her, she was always a talented and consummate professional. We were very lucky to have her. She came to us in 2012 and helped guide us through some difficult and trying times. She was a tireless worker, got things done to ensure that the district was shown in the best light possible. She worked hard and long to make sure that Proposition S passed, Proposition I was successful. Her work, planning, and organizational skills on strategic plan ensured that all stakeholders had a voice and were heard. I had the pleasure of working with Jana and will miss her very much. I'm very sorry for this devastating loss to her family and Ferguson Floerson School District. She was a dedicated and professional and a friend. I have a moment of silence for Jana to keep her family and our thoughts and our prayers as we go forward with their lives without her. Thank you. On a happier note, I'd like to welcome Dr. Davis. Here we go. Under provisions of the public meeting law, the state of Missouri, the board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes a date, time, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, July 6, 2015, at Administration Center 1005, Waterford Drive, Floerson, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Ms. Hoxton, do you call the roll?
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Mr. Chabot?
Aye.
Secretary votes aye. Dr. Furman?
Aye.
Mr. President?
Motion carries. Adoption of Agenda for Closed Meeting. Section 610.021 of Missouri law provides for discussion of certain agenda items in a closed meeting. Notice of the proposed closed meeting, including the agenda items to be discussed, were posted. The Board by roll call vote must authorize holding the closed meeting and approve the proposed agenda by reference to each subject to be discussed. Agenda for the closed meeting is legal, Section 610.021.1, and personnel, Section 610.021.3. Ms. Hoxton, do you call the roll?
Do we need a motion on the other one? Do we need a motion?
Oh, we do need a motion, I'm sorry.
Didn't we have one last time?
No, we need a motion. We need to go back to the number two.
I just realized that.
Just have a motion to adopt the agenda for a closed meeting. A move by Mr. Chabot and seconded by Mr. Ebert to have a adopted agenda for a regular meeting. Do you call the roll again?
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Mr. Chabot?
Aye.
Do you have a motion for a closed meeting?
I move that we adopt the agenda for closed meeting.
Aye.
Do you call the roll?
Dr. Graves? Aye. Mr. Chabot?
Aye.
Dr. Furman?
Aye.
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Secretary votes aye.
Board and strategic plan updates. This portion of the meeting is allocated to the Board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to Board members and the community. Mr. Ebert?
I'd just like to say that I first met Jana Short years ago at Combs, where her kids went to school with my children. And we're at a PTO meeting, and this young, vibrant, energetic woman kind of joined in. And, you know, anybody who's been part of a PTO knows that, you know, you kind of want to latch on to anybody with that much energy. And our families, you know, got pretty close as far as school. And my kids play with her kids, and I know Trent and everything. So it's really devastating, as Mr. Morris said. But I had to mention that I knew her as a mom. And, boy, was she a great mom. And it was amazing, the impact she had on all of us in our school. And even after she got the position here, you know, she was always showing up at Combs for all the little events and things like that. She definitely will be missed. I will now read my strategic update. I'm on the financial portion of that. And here we go. The auditors were in our district in June to perform their preliminary audit review. They reviewed expenditures and internal controls to assure that the district is in compliance with state and federal guidelines. They will return for a few weeks in November to finalize the audit. That's point number one. Number two, the finance office staff is working this month to update the new budget into the MUNIS system and finalize year and expenditures. They will also be working on a new procedure booklet during the next few months that will be given to administrators and office professionals when they come back in the new school year. This booklet will have guidelines on processes and sample forms to refer to. On that point, I really want to commend Laura Medriza, our CFO, and her office. Through different committees and things that we've been on, it kind of showed that we needed to kind of have some uniformity amongst different departments and things like that. And hopefully, that'll all come about. Number three, the Education Foundation received confirmation of final total of money that was contributed on Give St. Louis Day on May 5. I'm happy to report that $3,219.77 in matching grant fund funding was added to the donation of $12,728.38, or a grant total of $15,948.15 that was raised on May 5. The Foundation will have a meeting in late July to prepare for the new school year. And point number four, Aramark has graciously donated funds for the Education Foundation to place a quarter-page ad in the St. Louis Business Journal for an upcoming edition featuring Ferguson one year later. The Foundation appreciates their support, which will allow us to bring awareness of the Foundation to the community.
Go ahead. Mr. Brown?
Hello. How is everybody tonight? I hope well. You showed up in the summer. That's dedication. I have the responsibility of the stakeholder in the Community Engagement Report. I was privileged to be assigned to Jana, and she nurtured me along quite well. She would give me this information, and then I would come up here, and she would be my cheerleader to get me to do it correctly. I was delighted to work with her. Today, as I was going over some of these reports, I realized that there were ones that she had given me previously. So it was a moment of reflection. And I was privileged to work with her, as all of you were. The Stakeholder in Community Engagement Report. We have various summer camps that have been offered during June, which are completed, and going through July. The purpose is our effort to keep our students engaged. And the camps are Summer Adventure Club at Commons Lane, Boys and Girls Basketball Camps at McClure North, a Grow, Plan, Succeed Camp for incoming 7th graders at Cross Keys Middle School. We had various athletic camps at McClure High School, and the Challenger Learning Center has offered various workshops and camps. These keeping our kids busy and engaged and a good thing for the district to be doing. We also had Boys and Girls Clubs that were launched at Ferguson's Middle School. About 200 students aged 6 through 15 are attending the full-day program that is running through the summer months. The students are involved in outdoor activities, field trips, and classes. The Spring 2015 Edition of Impact has been published. Everyone should have received a copy in the mail. It is also on the district website if you did not receive one. And I think if you didn't receive one, I'm sure spoken to one of us, we certainly will make sure that you do have one. Now Boeing has partnered with the district and United Way to offer the Boeing Science Zone. This activity will take place Saturday, July 25, at McClure South Berkeley from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., ages 8 through 18. Parents may register their children through a link on the district website. We've been doing free breakfasts and lunch for children 18 and under. It will continue at Central Elementary School through the end of July. And our Back to School Fair and Unity Celebrations takes place on August 1 at this present site. It is intended to be an uplifting, unifying situation. I know that so many of you have diligently worked on this. And as I was going over what to say, I realized I didn't have the times. And I think it's from 10 till 2, am I right?
10 till 1.
10 through 1, okay. And I was going based on my very poor memory. But anyways, 10 to 1 here, and we want a terrific showing. And I'm pretty sure that all the Board members will be here, and we will certainly have fun with all of you. So we look forward to that. We know how diligently you've all worked on it. And that is my community report today. Thank you.
Dr. Graves?
Good evening, everyone. For me, I'll be quite short this month. I am still learning. And I had the opportunity over the past month to attend the Leadership Summit for the Missouri School Board of Association, which was a great event to attend, as I'm getting my feet wet in this district. I got to attend the Advances in Addressing Problems Behavior, Addressing the Needs of Student Subgroups, Palmetary Procedures for Delegates, and then I also had the opportunity to vote as a delegate. So that was a really exciting event, just to, you know, get to see the process and just be a part of that. And so also, over the course of the last month, I've been doing my online training. And then this weekend, I get to do a little bit more training. So that's why I did it.
Very good. Dr. Chabot?
Well, as past president, I've taken over the responsibilities of Mr. Morris, who's now sitting in the big chair over there. So I'm in charge of the facilities and technology portion of the strategic plan. I have not attended any meetings in the last month. I was out of town. But Mr. O'Neill was kind enough to send me an update regards to the bond issue that was passed and the safety and security projects that are going to be in place. We're currently at Phase 1, where they're going to be installing security cameras throughout the school district. That'll be completed in Phase 1 and 2, but the primary plan now is we're working on Phase 1. Next year will be Phase 2, and then on Phase 3 is when we actually do some construction redoing the entryways into our schools. But right now, the focus is on adding in additional security cameras in the buildings as well as on the entryways. So this community part, Ferguson-Floerson had a great turnout for the Ferguson 4th of July Parade. It was tremendous. It was probably the best parade that I had experienced since I've been living here. And it was great to see a turnout not only from the Board and district staff, but the students as well. So my kudos to them for their support. On Jana. Over the last year was really, really hard, especially for me. Not only was I trying to navigate us through a superintendent search, but I was dealing with Ferguson and everything that took place with that. Because I live in Ferguson, my office is right by the police station. You know, I sit on my porch, and I saw the smoke, and we had helicopters over our house at night, police cars everywhere, and it was just a really, really trying time. And Jana was an absolute blessing to me during this time, not only helping me with my Board responsibilities, but just as a person, as a human being, that took the time to sit there and talk to me. And I walk in there, and I'm just stressed. I just don't know what to do. And by the time I'm leaving, she has me laughing, she has my mind off of it. And that was the kind of person Jana was. You know, we can sit here all night and talk about what a great employee she was and a coworker, but I have never met a soul such as her that was just so kind and giving. And the world is in a better place just because of her. Her impact in my life will be with me forever.
Ms. Hoxton?
I have the talent portion of the strategic plan. And in talking about talent, I know that everybody in this room loves the school district. We all work hard for the school district, and we want the children of the district to succeed as well as the district. And with Jana in my mind and in my heart, and I talked to Scott about this before, is that she was an awesome mother, but we also must remember to put our families first and put our children, our own children, first. And I am really wanting to talk to Dr. Davis and to Larry about what is important in your life, and that your family is important. And I know that the rest of the executive directors, I know you all have small children, people on the cabinet, all the teachers, we can give our life to this district, but you must remember that you've got a family. And I remember when Dr. Davis first came and we were talking about housing and where he was going to go, one thing that he said was, "If Mama ain't happy, nobody's." And I want everybody to remember that, because Jana did give a lot of her life to this district as well as her family. But we have to remember that our families come first, and not that we'll neglect the district, but put your family first, and that's everybody with small children. And I can point to all of you that have small children that are here 90 hours a day. So please, just remember that, and that goes for the Board members too. We have to put our families first. Thank you.
Dr. Thurman?
I don't have a mic, so I'm scared you're going to... Good evening, everyone. I have so much that I want to say about her. And I know I won't be able to get at all that, but the one thing that she made me realize and to just think about is, we need to appreciate each other. We never know the day or time. We need to think about what's important. And don't sweat the small stuff. And it's all small stuff, you're right. Jana's going to be a hard act to follow. Most of all, I call Jana friend, and she will always be in my heart. I will always know her smile and that energy. And the one thing I will always think of when I think about Jana is the hard work that she put into the district. She loved this district, and she showed it. And all of her work is around this building and will always be. So Jana, you know, we love you. And I know she's looking at us saying, "Get on with it." And we will, we shall. I also want to tell you about some of the business of the district. Didn't get a lot in this month. Had some other things that I had to attend to, but I did attend the Leadership Conference in Tantera with Dr. Graves, and it was really, really good. Very informative, very helpful for someone new on the Board and someone who's relatively new on the Board. Gathered quite a bit of information. Wanted to be a strong Board member. I also want to say that if anyone comes at me with a knife, I am going to run. This has been my second surgery in, what, since February? So I'm hoping that this will be the last for this year. Why are you laughing, guy? Get Dr. Aaron to get me out. So I am doing okay. It's just going to take a while to get through this, but thank you for the Board. You just don't know the kind of support we get from each other. And I just want to say thank you to you, to one of my brothers and sisters, for the prayers and the help and the support. And also, just thank you to you all too for the support that you give to the district. We can't do this without you. So thank you again, and hopefully, we won't have to go into a shelter before the night ends.
All right. Now, as I said earlier, Jana will be missed. I dealt with Jana, and she helped me, and I helped her, and we had a great relationship. Truly miss her. Couple things. As most of you know, the Missouri State Conference of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, Redditt Hudson, Phyllis Johnson, and Doris Bailey are suing the Ferguson-Floerson School District and the Board of Election Commissions or Voting Rights Act violations. We hold our elections, according to state statute, always have, always will. I feel we've done nothing wrong. But so far, we're not quite through with all the depositions. And to date, this has cost the school district $118,752.77. And we're not even halfway there yet. So this lawsuit is taking money away from the children of this district in a big way. And we're going to have to have some budget adjustments to pay for it. After passing Proposition I and Proposition S, we're finally in good financial state, and now we're back in deficit spending. Because we follow the law. Now, on a happier note, Mr. O'Rourke, do you come up here, please? Larry, I just want to thank you for the tireless and many, many, many hours that you put in in a job you didn't ask for.
I won.
But you were the right man at the right time, and I don't think I could have done that without you. And I know it's not much, but I hope that you and Trudy enjoy that pretty damn much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted a hug.
Dr. Davis? We are so happy to see you. The only person that's happy to see you is here. But you've got a little sign, what you open up? A little something that I'll give you to St. Louis and Ferguson-Floerson School District?
It's very full of tissues.
And we're so happy to have you.
Boarding up to the games.
Look at the sleeves.
A rock, nice. Yeah. Nice. Well, we'll turn you into a cardinal. Pretty easy doing this, haven't we? It will. All right. Next on the list would be Ms. Salomon, Ferguson-Floerson NEA President.
Good evening. Most of you have seen me walking around, so you know the business of the association continues on even in the summer. I don't have much to share this evening. I just wanted to say I'm looking very forward to working with you, Dr. Davis. So welcome, and looking forward to that. And I also wanted to share that the association will be making a donation to the FFSB Scholarship Fund and Janet's Honor. So we would like to remember her as well. Thank you.
And Superintendent, Dr. Joseph.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to everyone, and good evening to all. I am excited about being here. Larry, even though he's not in the row, he'll still be here, and my full support. So let's give Larry another round of applause. Awesome. So just a few things I wanted to share this evening. I too want to acknowledge the life of Jana Short. When I was applying for the job and was interviewed, and then told I was a... When I was applying for the job and was interviewed and then told I was a finalist, Jana was one of the first persons that I remember. My wife remembers her well also because when I came back from my finalist interviews, she escorted us around, you know, from, of course, Berkeley to McClure to here and just different places. And she was always a beautiful spirit. A woman who had a faith, strong faith, and just an awesome person. And you don't forget people like that. They made a huge impact on their life. And I'm all about relationships and people. And so when I was headed back home the day she passed, well, the next day actually, because I was here that board meeting evening, Larry called me and I was at the airport. And he actually sent me a text. I think he had tried to call and send me a text and said, "Call me immediately." And I just knew that wasn't a good text. And when I called and he told me that Jana had passed, I was at the airport, literally, I had to sit where I was because I was floored. And, and you know, I, I think about some of the things that you all have said. It rings so true to my, to my heart. And that is that none of us know when, you know, our time is up. And so it's important to celebrate life. Celebrate each other when you have the opportunity because no one knows that last moment. So I, I want to acknowledge the spirit that she carried and that this world is a better place because of her. And the short time that I got to know her, it was amazing. And I was so looking forward to it. In fact, I can show you emails where we had gone back and forth many times in her preparing me to be successful. So I just want to publicly say thank you, Jana. She knows I was grateful to her, but I want to say it publicly because she was an amazing woman. Couple of other things I wanted to share. It was mentioned already that we're gonna have our One Hundredth School Festival on August 1st. And so we really encourage the community to come out. Because we want to make it clear that we're heading in the right direction. We're going forward and higher. We want to make sure our children are celebrated and our schools are celebrated. We also will have a session on August 6th for our teachers and our employees at McClure, in the hub. And just really looking forward to a great 2015, 2016 school year. I am passionate about this work. I'm committed fully. Both of my feet are in here because not only do I live in Ferguson, my son will be going to Ferguson-Floreson Schools. So not only am I superintendent, I'm also a parent. And there isn't a parent any more committed than I. And I don't know of a parent who doesn't want the best for their child. Every parent I've ever met in my twenty-three years in education wants their child to get a great education. And I see her because of that. And it's my duty, my duty to make sure that we make that happen for every child in every classroom, every day. And I believe we have great people who work in this school district. I've worked with many of them so far. And I can tell you many stories of the joy that I'm getting with the work that I'm seeing. And so I look forward to that going even deeper and higher. Just a couple of things that we're focused on in the next coming weeks as we prepare for school to open will be on supporting principals so that they can be great instructional leaders for their, their teachers. Teachers are the cornerstone and principals have to support that. And making sure that our students achieve. Because at the end of the day, if children don't get it, then what's the purpose? And whatever benefits do we have, that they're getting it. And that is my champion goal is to make sure every child gets a great education. And so I look forward to working with Ms. Samuelman and FFNEA and all of the teachers, all of the community. Because what I want is a great school climate where people want to come to work. Morale is high. Discipline is under control so that students can learn like they ought to. And then we hold to it. And I want everyone to like me. And I, and I'm gonna work hard to make that happen. But I especially want children to learn. And that is my singular focus, is that they get a great education. And so we gotta make sure that every day, that they have good attitudes and good behavior. And they, they learn at levels unmatched. As a parent and as a superintendent. So thank you for your support. I look forward, you can't imagine how much I look forward to this. And I believe that the Lord puts us all in places. That it's His divine providence. And I believe we're all here for such a time as this. So I don't think it's a coincidence. I think that we were all ordained to be here. And I just want to do my part. And I plan to do it well because I answer to Him. So thank you all for your support.
Public comments. The Board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed. And will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the Board or request to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and in keeping with District Policies forty-fifty-four and forty-fifty-nine and personnel law, should refrain from making negative comments or personally identifiable. While the Board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the Board President may ask clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session. Mr. Park, you wish to speak?
I'm Jim Park. I think everybody knows me, you've seen me. Was a board member for a number of years. And attended a number of national school board conventions. And I understand that one or two of the board members went to this last students convention in April or February. In that country. And I'd like to know what they brought back to the district from attending those committees. I think they lasted three or four days. When I was going to them, they were full days from eight o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night. And we brought a lot of good information back to the district, shared it with staff and teachers. So I'd like to hear what the Board has to say on this last week.
Kim Shaw.
Hi, my name is Kim Steely. I've been an employee of the district for nineteen years. About the same as Joy. First of all, I want to say welcome. We're happy you're here. I also wanted to say some words about Jana. Pardon me, I'm a little nervous, but she really will be missed. And I hope that whoever replaces her can be a fourth of the woman that she was. So anyway, she meant a lot to early Ed and that's what I came to talk about. I know that there are funding issues and money problems. But I really want to ask you to please consider not cutting anything from early Ed. We are bare bones as we are. We've got an excellent program, but we cannot handle anymore. We've got wonderful teachers. We need to have more kids in the program. But because of funding cuts and the transportation, we've lost so many children. And those are kids that as they get into elementary school, that's when they're gonna be, that's when the problems are gonna start or you're gonna start noticing things that we could've caught in preschool. So just kind of my two cents. And please come visit us anytime. Come into the classroom, see what we do, see how the kids learn, see how the parents are there. Come on a home visit. But please, please don't cut us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Laura Madrusik.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Laura Madrusik and I work in the Administration Center. I just wanted to share with the Board, I'm not sure if you're aware, and then also with the public too, that the district has partnered with Operation Food Search. And there's some locations that we weren't able to reach with our free meals. And so we wanted to try to reach a broader base of students so that they could get some free meals. It's going to start on this Monday, July thirteenth, and it's gonna run through July thirtieth. And we're hoping to maybe expand it through August seventh. We're gonna have Operation Food Search people are gonna be at the Robert Holtsel Memorial Park, which is on Bermuda Road up by Highway seventy. And then the other one is going to be at Jackson Park, right behind City Hall in Berkeley. They're gonna be there from twelve to two. And they're gonna be feeding our students or they're feeding any students or any kids, actually, from up to the age of eighteen. And so please share this. We're gonna be having people go out and spread flyers and, and get the word out through those various means that we have. But I just wanted to share with you that we are doing that, that we have partnered with them. And we're gonna have some of our food service people are gonna go help with this program, thanks to Dr. Diggs and our Food Service Department. So this is available to some of the students. So we just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that we've got these couple of other opportunities.
Thank you.
Can I just offer a comment to what you just said?
Sure.
Laura, right across the street, we have a summer camp for Floreson, well, it's for the Floreson area, I would say. And they actually have to bring their lunches. And I think that if we have one more place that we can outreach, that would be a great place. It is right immediately across the street at James Edgins Center.
James Edgins, okay.
So I think, and I know it may be a hardship for some of those parents.
Okay.
But they actually have to bring their lunches. So if there's, that's one more resource that we can use.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Paul Schrader.
Good evening. I'm Paul Schrader, a former board member. One comment I would like to make, I'd like to commend the Board for taking the time to personally attend the trainings of Missouri School Board Association and the National School Board Association. I know in my nine years on the Board, I learned a lot at those meetings. It's amazing how everyone thinks they know what the Board does. And when you get on the Board, you find out, whoops, the role of the Board is not exactly what I thought it was. And those trains really helped a lot. On another note, I was glad to see in the newspaper, it was about the end of June, there was an article that the twenty-two school districts in St. Louis County were talking about how they could help Normandy and Riverview improve, both financially and academically. And I think that with my comments from last month, I think it's pretty obvious that was exactly what I would like to see happen also. I know financially, the lawsuit is causing some problems. But I do think that my comments of looking at our tuition that we charge to our transfer students is something that should be addressed. And I think we could make quite a positive statement to both our community and the St. Louis County community of how we want to put our money where our mouth is, so to speak, on helping our neighbors improve. And the request that I have for you is that whatever you choose to do as far as tuition for transfer students, I would ask that that be made public and announced at the August board meeting. It's a perfect time to do that. It's the very first day of school for most of our students in this area. And it would let everyone know exactly where we are and where we're going in the 2015, 2016 school year.
My friend, Tony Burrell.
Good evening. Thank you. I was planning on not coming tonight just simply because I didn't want to hear about Jana and I didn't want to talk about Jana. Jana was real close to me. And I know what Shaboo was talking about. We had a big old fight that Monday. And we was going back and forth on the phone. I love her for doing that because she would straighten me out real quick. I told her dad, her dad told me, he said, "I bet we, I bet between the two of us, we got a hundred stories about Jana." And I, and her mother said, "Don't get Tony to talk about Jana." So we had a big talk about Jana anyway. She had sent me an email that day and I just opened it a couple of days ago. And true to her form, she was saying, because I didn't want to open the email. And she was saying in that email, "I can help you." And she gave me all these things telling me what to do about the situation with the summer camp. But the last thing she had said to me, "You should be telling me what to do." And we kept going back and forth with that because we used to do that all the time. And I gotta tell you that I appreciate your phone call. I appreciate you, Kevin, I really do. There's some people in this room that knew how close Jana and I were. And people who called me, not just on that day, but a week later, there was some people in this room that called me to see how I was doing. And I really came here tonight to just say thank you for all of you that called me. Thanks. Because they knew about a relationship that we had that was not public. She helped me so much. And I just want to tell you that relationships like those that we had are not made every day. If you get you somebody that you can depend on, no matter what your race is, no matter what your gender is, somebody that you can depend on. I'm gonna tell you now, hang on. My mother used to say, "Time not in it," and hang on. But I do want to tell you thank you so much. Thanks, babe. I do have something to talk to you about and want to tell you, ma'am. I know you said you didn't get around much. And I want to tell you, Brother Brown, we got a camp going on over on the backside of Ferguson. And there are a lot of people that's putting in a lot of time over there. We are, one of my, I've got some better family, like college students, ten of them, that are working with these kids. Twenty-two students from Onzeal, teachers, came out to work with these students. In our wrap-up session tonight, one of them said, "We're changing minds. We're doing the My Own system." Patty came on board. Our kids are reading on My Own every day. From the scheduling hour today. Now, I'm being, anybody know Jaji Bichelli? He's performing his butt off this year. He's got our kids that, we've got Caucasian kids that dance better than the Africans. He's doing it. I mean, one, one girl told me, there's a Caucasian girl, she said, "I didn't know my son had soul." Jaji is working out. Let me tell you what Jaji told me. I wrote him a check the other day. Seventeen hundred dollars for the first half. And he tore the check up in my face. And he said, "Your money ain't no good with me." I got some boys coming in from Boeing in the morning before they go to work. Boeing's not paying them a dime, they're taking vacation time. They coming in in the morning and we got robots crawling up the wall. We got robots going to pick up tickets in the corner. We got robots that these kids have built from scratch. Come see them. You thought they was hanging out last year? They doing it. We had the Navy to come out. One of the people in my Board is a commander in the U.S. Navy. So he got us hooked up with sea perch. And we're doing underground water baths this, this coming fall. We are going to Washington, D.C. Had a guy that said, "How much did you say you need?" I said, "Twenty-two fifty." And that's not twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. He wrote me a check of twenty-two thousand dollars. And we're taking those kids to Washington, D.C. for Science Center. And we, I am the co-chair for AAUW Women's Association with the University of, University of Women for STEM. And we're building ships. The Navy is having a sail, S-E-I-L. Sail for STEM. I'm waiting on your grandson. I got a spot for him, I held the spot. It's on me. I know a lot of times when I've gone, we've gone out and we've campaigned for Proposition S for I. And you were right there doing it, knocking on those doors. So it's on me, whatever the cost, it's on me. If he wants to go to D.C., it's on me. I'm not here to talk about that. I came here really to say, you know, I love Luke eighteen where it talks about, "Did I not heal ten?" Talk about coming back telling God, "Thanks." I'm grateful tonight for all of those people that have stepped up. Coach Al Hurd has an all-boys team. We have collaborated. I started out, I had ten kids because of a mishap of displacement from schools. And I had ten kids, but those ten kids were important because I believe in leave the ninety-nine and go get the one. So I told God, "Just tell me which one it is and I'll work, I'll do, do what I gotta do with it. I gotta work with the tenth." So I talked to Hurd and he said, I said, "Why don't we collaborate?" So we put his boys and our team together and we're going to Camp Manitoua. The guy down there told me, "Your deal is the same as it was in the fall." I can take 75 kids, $1,000 each, for free." You know I like that word, "free." So, I called the guy who directs the bus company, Fedora, and I said, "I want to take some kids down." He said, "You know that deal that we did for you early in the year? He said, "I really liked how you treated my bus drivers, blah, blah, blah." He said, "It's on me. I'm going to tell you about favor. If you got favor, you don't really need a lot of dollars." I got the books ready today, my, all of the kids put 100 books together for parents and teachers, spare brand-new books. We're giving to parents and teachers to pass out in the homes that don't have books. Chabot, we talked about it yesterday, I said, "I've got 400 spare brand-new books." And so, that's what we're doing. This is more than about, "What can I do for you?" That Janice Jackson thing, what you've done for me lately. It's what we can do for our kids. I want to get them before they come to school, and whatever that takes. Where we are now, I didn't know why I was going to Central. I even went kicking and screaming, "Tell the truth."
Cut it out.
Tell the truth.
Cut it out.
Come on, you no idea. I went screaming and hollering, "What the?" And I didn't say the word, but I was thinking it. But I know now that I'm supposed to be at Central. Those people over there are my clients that need electricity and gas and water and rent and mortgage. So, I get to see them up close today. A hundred telephone calls just since Monday. We have accommodated every one of them. I thought I was supposed to give $30,000 to Eric Wood, you know, Duchesne, blah, blah, blah. It was Central. I was trying to work on my own strength. I'm not trying to have church here tonight. I'm just trying to tell you what's going on in that neck of the woods. Larry LaRue, thank you. You made me promise I was going to be good. Thank you.
I would never ask you that.
Oh, you know what she's saying. So, bottom line, come see us if you want to see camp going on strong. MyOn, they're reading for me one hour a day, but they're so hooked on books right now, instead of them going to play basketball. Got to tell you about the basketball camp. Anybody know Coach Morrow? Coach Morrow?
Yeah.
She's over there. Is she doing it? She has a basketball camp that we're doing this summer, and she's the head coach. We have some kids over from the zoo in Omsul who's coming, and they're coached, they're playing basketball at their schools, and they're helping. So, we got a lot of things going. You're missing out when you don't come see what we're doing. Thanks for you coming. I appreciate you. I've got cards that I'm giving out. You're not getting one because you don't use it. If they call me, I'm not going to give you another card. That's what I need, I need your people to call. So, come see what we're doing. We're changing lives, and I appreciate every one of you for what you've done. I came here last time you weren't here, I wanted to just tell you, thanks for all the years you've been on this board, how you've helped me. I don't think I would be where I am today if you hadn't have been on this board, talking stuff, making me realize that I had to do because you were up here. I appreciate you. I appreciate you being here, and I hope you continue to come and teach us. Thank you. There are a whole lot of things going. You, it's an open invitation. Thank you. I told Chabot, "Have you ever seen this man with some kids?" So, my kids are waiting. Super Saturdays, every Saturday.
Every Saturday?
Every Saturday. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Williams, Arthur Williams. I see that he's gotten smarter. He doesn't wear a tie at meetings. And we're not going one day at a meeting and told him, "I like these ties, they're pretty tight." And at the end of the meeting, I walked to the back of the room, and Jana hands me his tie. So, I wear it. I wore it the next meeting, and he wasn't there. I had a box for him for my ties, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm fortunate that I'm a parent of two lovely daughters in the district. Company I work for, Life Care Center, Florissens in the district, and I was blessed to be picked, be on the education foundation. First, Mr. Davis, thank you for coming. Couldn't win anywhere else, but we appreciate you. On a personal note, I knew Jana. I started coming to board meetings and would sit way back in the back, and Jana started talking to me, and we started having lunches, and she started telling me what I needed to do in the district. And I thought I was doing enough, going to my kid's school and doing stuff, helping my job, but Jana had me doing a lot of more things. And thanks to her, I'm more involved in the district, and I'm a better person for it. And I'm really going to miss her and our conversations over the phone. It was, if I missed a board meeting, she always would call me first to scold me for not being there, but then she would give me my update. Here, behalf of the night, to speak on Celebrate Children. I know, year before last, budget cuts, money for Celebrate Children was cut. I don't know if it was intentional or unintentional. If your kids have never been in Celebrate Children, or you've never been, you're missing a treat with the arts. When we thought it wasn't going to happen, my oldest daughter, who's in high school now, cried because my youngest daughter wasn't able to be in it. But fortunately, they raised money and they came up, they were able to help Celebrate Children this year. So much of the alumni came back and gave it their own time, it didn't charge. So many of the parents, we, whether it was painting props or whether it was helping to raise money, we did. And you see kids that you see in the school or bashful, who don't speak up or don't do nothing, but they get out on the stage and they light up and they dance and they sing. And it boosts their confidence so that they go on and do greater things in life. And it would really be a disservice to the district and to the childrens and to the family to not try and help their program. I know there are always money issues, just like there are money issues in my home, and we have to figure out what we're going to pay for and what we're not. But to take the service away would really be a disservice to the children.
Thank you. That's the last card we have for this evening. Consent agenda, administration of assistance following items for approval under the consent agenda. Mr. Schobin, did you read this?
$13,050, $50,000, $575 for payroll, teacher non-teacher, and for operational disbursements, $3,027,169.83, for a total of $16,077,745.33.
Any motion?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second. I move by Mr. Schobin, second by Mr. Hubert, to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Dr. Davis.
So, I would like to propose the framework of powerful results at a meeting with the cabinet to introduce this framework. It aligns with the district's strategic plan, focus areas of predation and student achievement, talent management, classroom and school climate, as well as areas of priority that identifies since, in the various sources of data since beginning my transition. And those areas are quality teachers, administrators, high student performance, and executive operations. The goal of this initiative is to assist our principals and our executive directors to supervise and support them to use distributed leadership strategies and practices. The intent of this framework is to improve student learning and achievement, teacher leadership, and instructional capacity. This framework includes leadership development through targeted leadership consulting. TLC has worked for numerous districts across the country. I've worked with them, well, with the framework for a number of years, that is highly effective, and would like the board to consider this as a framework that we use this coming school year. Taking a look at all what we do, and it really will take what we do already and put it in a framework, and be more effective in our instructional leadership capacities. So, we submitted that to you, and I'd like to, uh, my proposal on that.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second. And moved by Ms. Hogshead, and second by Mr. Brown. During discussion.
This was approved this year. Next year would there be a recurring cost of enough $31,000, or?
So, that's one of the questions I asked the consultant firm itself, and there are some dollars available. It won't be as much, because it would be a coaching process from that point on, but this is just a starter, it would be this cost. And so, next year, I think the cost will be different. But my goal is for it to be as neutral as possible, and so there are dollars available funding in terms of grant running. So, I would expect it would be another fee of this amount, but the next year's amount would be dependent on kind of support the schools and principals. Can the concept be like a train to trainer as well?
They'll come in, they'll train the groups?
Absolutely. So, initially, our executive directors, and I met with them, would get some de-training around the whole framework. I mean, the who works with the secondary school principals, as well as the two that work with elementary schools. And they would be trained deeply on that top framework, again, from how they build collaborations within their leadership teams, their school buildings, their examining data, and then, you know, follow up. One of the things that I, and me, and going to every school, is having a strong walkthrough protocol that we use to help assess whether or not learning is happening. So, we would have our EDs who would be trained deeply, and they will be working for our principals. However, TLC will initially begin that training, develop them. I'll be a part of that process as well, but I would be able to see that also.
Is this replacing anything that we already do?
Yeah, so, we do MOLI. It won't necessarily replace MOLI, but what will happen is that once we've already gone through MOLI, we'll just get a next level of training for them. I met this week in my office with Commissioner Marjorie Dandaman, she came, as well as Dr. Clancy May, who's one of the state supervisors, spoke to them. I met with them in my office Monday, and shared the concept with them, and they were pretty excited about it, and saw how it adds value to the work that they've done with MOLI. So, we would, the principals who haven't been trained would be trained in this framework, so that they would be able to get that kind of support they need.
And what kind of funding is available? Is this Title I, or is this?
Yeah, so, the federal programs director, Ms. Jocelyn, she's here. So, she and I have had some conversations with TLC, and so she's written it into the title, "Two Budget for Funding."
Very good. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Framework and Powerful Results, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Technology, Adobe Creative Cloud for High Schools. Dr. Gialli.
Good evening. District is respectfully requesting permission from Board of Education to allow technology department purchase application known as Adobe Creative Cloud for our high school. The dollar amount would be for two years, an annual expenditure of $12,324.96. Organization who we have selected is called Insight Public Sector. This application will be used for all of our high schools, for our students to use, which is Adobe Creative Cloud. Really, it's 11 different applications, very useful, we are using that. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any motion to accept the adoption of Adobe Creative Cloud?
My second.
And moved by Dr. Thurman, second by Mr. Schobin. I think it's a great idea. That's a wonderful price. I remember getting Adobe suites when I was teaching, and I'd pay $5,000 for my classroom.
This costs a lot.
To get a district license for 12 for two years is absolutely fantastic.
So, with it being a cloud-based, it's still licensing per computer or per login?
This, we have made an agreement with the organization to install on 600 different computers. We have, what, 304 staff members? We agreed to install on 608 computers in our schools to be used. Adobe Creative Cloud also gives you login, but that's not our agreement. And I said, if the staff member decides to install at home, that's beyond our control. Nevertheless, we have the right to install it on our computers, on 608 machines.
Yeah, because one of the challenges I had on that core was that the version that the school was using was so far behind term releases, and above to buy the new releases, the project he worked at at home weren't cross-compatible with the older version.
Correct.
And it was so, this would help, this would bring it up to date.
That is correct. That would be up to date, as all the updates takes place within Adobe, these are all will be embedded within the software. And they have moved to, you know, licensed space rather than installing a software, so we no longer have to fall behind versions in our district.
And this is a one-year license?
One-year license for $12,000.
If students had assignments, would they be able to do those at home as well, or it won't carry on?
Unfortunately, it is for our staff and school, and the computers within our district. It is not for students to use it. Students can use that school.
Yeah, I think if I could, if they could purchase it individually at home, and then the program developed at home, they could then, they'll be compatible, so they can use it from there, but the students would have to be responsible for the cost of it.
I was just thinking, I like if it was used as a homework assignment, and the child couldn't finish it at school, just like using the cloud, would they be able to carry it over? That's what I'm thinking.
It's just like Microsoft Word. If I have that homework, if I have that school, I can make the transition. However, in this particular scenario, it is solely for the purpose of installing on a computer in our schools.
For those who aren't familiar with Adobe Creative Cloud, it's, everybody's heard Photoshop, it's one of the programs, and in Design, which is a more of a publishing kind of program, Acrobat Pro, which allows you to create the Acrobat files instead of just reading them, plus eight or nine other programs.
Dreamweaver After Effects, Illustrator, Audition, Flash, I mean, those are all the part of it.
So, it's, Adobe's very, 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 very good software. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. There you go.
Thank you.
Pretty education contract with Development Systems.
Good evening. I wanted to take just a second to add to the tribute to Jana, saying she was a great friend to earlier. We loved her, and we knew her also as a wonderful mom, because all of her children were in preschool with us. She was super. And also, an early thank you for the books for parents and teachers. That's a wonderful surprise this evening, so thank you. Officially, I'm here to ask for your support to renew our contract with Developmental Systems in the amount of $15,000 out of the early education budget. Developmental Systems provides a unique service in consulting work for our teachers and parent educators, providing home visits to help families who are having issues with their children at home and at school. I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have.
Any motion?
So moved.
My second.
And moved by Ms. Hogshead, and second by Mr. Schobin, to accept the contract with Developmental Systems. Any questions? Ms. Ross. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Professional Development Board Report. Mr. Schobin.
This year, the district's Professional Development Committee has accomplished much as reflected in the summary provided in the board materials. Highlights of the report include the continued development of professional learning program for teachers, improvement of the new teacher orientation and training, further alignment of the work of the PDC to support district's strategic and comprehensive school improvement plans, increased cohesion and teacher representation within the committee, and more collaborations with the administrators. The PDC committee is comprised of teachers from each building, an NEA representative, a principal representative from each level, and a board member. The committee is guided by the executive team, and the committee met for four full days this year to accomplish their work. The work of the PDC is directed by local, state, and federal requirements, and the cost of the proposed budget that's also in the evaluation is $375,566.72 for the 2015-16 school year, and is funded by local, state, and federal grants. I just want to point out- grants. I just want to point out, like the PD plan report, which was on page 13 of the report, in Appendix E, F, and G, needs assessment, PD days, and the budget for things to key in on in the next evaluation report. And I propose this be adopted by the board.
Thank you. Any motion?
No.
Second.
And moved by Dr. Thurman, seconded by Ms. Hogshead to accept Professional Development Report. Any questions for Ms. Wolf?
Are there any significant changes from that last year to this coming year for professional development?
Well, we did look at the strategic plan for the district and the CSIP plan, and we looked at meeting those needs of professional development with the needs assessment. So our PD days will be directed towards those needs. So every year, we look at our current needs and our ongoing needs as at the same time for the, what we bring to the district.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, the Dr. Dig Show. Myon Reader. Oh, you're here.
All right. So Myon Reader. Myon Reader was created to provide a personalized literacy environment that engages students at all levels with the largest enhanced library of digital books with reading supports customized to student individual interest and reading level. It provides reading assessments that measure the forecast of individual student growth, and the cost is $47,025, and will be funded by Title I funds.
Any motion?
No.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hogshead, and seconded by Mr. Ebert. Any questions about Myon Reader?
How many schools at this point are involved?
We have eight schools involved in Myon Reader at this time. But after talking with a couple of the schools, there may only be six now.
Why?
After looking and speaking with each of the principals, they looked at their usage reports and the benefits for using AR and Myon and the duplication of those programs to see which one they felt like was a better fit for their district or for their buildings. And they made decisions upon their data and those needs to determine which program to go with.
Has anybody looked at the data from both and come up with a very comprehensive evaluation of both so that we can go with one? Now, from what I can gather, from what I've heard, Myon seems to be very effective. Now, I'm not suggesting to you that the other is not. But I'm saying, why two?
So if I could just chime in a little bit, we've had this conversation over the last couple of days. And I met with, I think Mr. Moore's his name, Mike Moore, who is the representative for Myon. And I've gone on the program. I'm not as familiar with Myon, so I'm learning that program. I am familiar with they are. The question I ask, and so I'm not advocating for either one yet because I want evidence. And I think that's important, that whatever program we decide to use, that there's evidence that is, that students are growing. Whether it's Myon or AR, one of the things I've asked this afternoon today was to reach out to principals because where is the evidence? And coming in new, so I don't know what happened in the past. So what the question I asked was, so, you know, if you're using this program, where's the evidence that student outcomes have been improved? And so I can't definitively answer that yet because we don't have any evaluation tool in place yet. I'm evaluating myself and the cabinet are working on that. So for this school year, what I will be looking for is to see the value add for student outcomes and either the programs, whether it be Myon or whether it be AR. I'm not advocating for either one right now. I've had, have experience with AR. I'm learning Myon. I have gone over to a couple of schools and been in classes and seen the program working or in operation in schools. But we will look at the data and give evidence. Because I think that the public would want to know, if we're using these dollars, where's the evidence that is outcome for students? And so that's what we're working on for this year so that we can have some definitive answers. I know some people have strong opinions one way or the other, but I don't want us to get our opinions in the way of the facts. And the facts will be the evidence of outcomes.
You really need to streamline our reading programs.
Yeah.
And the amount of money that we're spending on the programs, if it's working for one school and not for another, I have a problem with that. I don't understand why it's working for one and not the other.
Right.
And why there's such value in one school and not value in another school. The data's the data. I mean, if one's doing well, then we need to go with that. And I'm in agreement with you. And I know you need to do the study and to find out which one works best. But I think what happens with us sometimes, we have so many options that we need to narrow those options down, especially for reading. And our schools are all over the place with our reading test scores.
I agree.
So we need to get the data, find out what works, and everyone needs to be on the same page.
Yeah, and I'm very encouraged with the fact, Dr. Davis, of what you've said in the day, you're going to very systematically go after information to determine which direction to go. And I, and I agree with you 100 percent. I think that's good advice.
It's been a problem for a long, long time. It's time for us to make a decision.
The last thing I would add then would be your approval of the framework for powerful results. It narrows the focus, right? So what is the target instructional area that we're going to focus on in our school? And what powerful practice are we using on a daily basis to move learning? And so, again, we'll spend time in schools. I'm not a reading expert. I know what questions to ask. I'm a math expert, but I know what questions to ask in schools. And so what I want is evidence. And that's what the board wants. I think that's what parents want, is evidence that is working. And so we're going to, you know, be thoughtful around all the programs that we have so that we can. But I'd love to have one program that we all do well, and it moves learning for children. But we're going to make sure we're thoughtful in that approach.
But every program, I'm sorry, but every program has got to be the devil in use of the program. And that means that everyone needs to be on some type of case.
I just want to, I just want to celebrate my one single piece of evidence, which was when my special dean's son, Jared, was introduced to Myon. He's taken off. We were on vacation. He's taking books with him. I catch him on the, you know, on the beach reading book. So, I mean, it's amazing. I kind, you know, no, that's not scientific, but I'll tell you what. And I know different kids, you know, different programs will help every kind of kid. But yeah, just wow. And he's doing it now, I guess, for a year. Wow.
And, you know, Ms. Ebert, you really bring out a point that I think this community and every community needs to acknowledge, and that is that there is a phenomenon I call summer loss. And students lose a lot during the summertime, yeah, especially students in poverty because of access. And students have to have access to the resources and the materials so that they don't lose like they have been. And so I think that that's one of the things I'm asking. Whatever program we use. Good deal. That we have something in the hands of children when they go home who would necessarily have the access, right, to give them those resources.
Any further discussion?
So how many schools do we have using each? Like, how many do we have using the AR and the STAR? I mean, AR.
We have eight schools asking to use it currently for next year, and then 17 for Accelerated Reader.
And are any of those schools able to do both? Some, I'm sorry.
We find strength in that. After speaking with the principals, their justification of ordering both for the few that did, they use it in different ways. For example, I'll just give an example. For Myon Reader, the early grades really use that in that, in their building because it has the read-to feature to the Myon Reader. And for the upper grades, three to six, they're really using the Accelerated Reader for the incentive and then incentive to read program and the goal setting.
And that, that could, the data could show that for grade levels, okay, three to eight, AR may be better than four, you know, others. Whatever it is, we just need to make it a statement by the board.
Any further discussion?
So would there be a power study this next school year? So what's the?
Yeah. So, and these are, I'm glad you all are asking these questions because these are the questions that we've had conversations about this very day, and this week actually, focusing on, you know, because the question I had was, does a school need two of these programs, you know, two reading programs? And I'm not to say yes or no at this moment because I don't think I have enough time and experience to be able to make that call. Principals can, so that's why we ask them. You know, you tell me what you need. And if the principal says they need both of them right now, fine. But I'm going to be looking for the evidence that it's working, right? Here are the inputs, and here's the outcome. And so, you know, does it work? So we will be, we will be developing evaluation too. I mean, that's something that can be done in our Department of Education easily so that we can provide evidence. And maybe not one-to-one, but some kind of correlation so that we're giving this and we're getting this. At the end of the day, here's the goal I think we all have, and that is that students grow a year, at least that. I mean, we, they deserve at least a year of learning, a year of reading. If they're at level four, they ought to be at five at the end of the school year if we've given the right inputs. And so that's what we'll be after. And that's sort of the marker we'll use when we determine whether or not the program is effective or not. Because we also want to be, because we have a fiduciary responsibility, want to be prudent with the resources we're using. It's tax dollars.
So with, I'm sorry, how are they aligned with the state?
Common Core?
Yes.
Yeah. And I know Patty can speak about that. But, yeah, so, and so most programs, most programs will shift, because I have experience. My son went through AR for years. I'm learning Myon. So, you know, but they all, you know, they proposition that they're aligned to AR. I think you have to really go deeper. Myon doesn't have a math component. STAR does, AR, and AM. And so they all report to be aligned to Common Core. I can tell you from a math perspective, it depends. It really depends on what standard you're looking at and what you're examining. And so you really have to go deeper and say, in seventh grade math, if students are specifically focused on our ratios and proportions, then where's the alignment in this program? And so that's the number to see if the curriculum is being addressed in these platforms.
And Dr. Davis, in regards to our research, do you have a timetable? I know that you mentioned that you want to see a year for kids to jump up to the next level. So I understand that. What kind of timetable are we looking at before we start making decisions about this?
I think we have to give it at least a year, at least a year, because we want to be fair and thoughtful as teachers and principals are approaching this. And so I'd say at the end of this year, we ought to have some data that can give us more evidence of which direction we ought to go in. It doesn't mean that, you know, we will have one program over the other. It could be that Myon and Accelerated Reader work for K2 and 35. I mean, we want to be thoughtful and careful before we make a decision. However, I want us to be prudent too because, you know, the recreators may not need Myon and Accelerated Reader. Maybe one works for you. I don't know yet. But at least a year to be able to give us some good data.
Any further discussion?
Just a few things. With any program, it really is the implementation and the structure of that program and how it's monitored throughout any building, whatever the program is. And we do want to make sure that it's our today. We're looking at the most effective way of whatever program it is that is selected ourselves after this year of evaluating. What I will share that I had out of the conversation with principals today is that they found value in AR because it really helped them to have those hard discussions with parents about STAR, our benchmark assessment, the math, the reading, and then the AR math and reading. They were able to have those conversations with parents as to whether their student was performing and what they needed to do, and how to help them select books that they're reading well. So there was a great connection with those pieces all together. So several principals did share that piece that they're having guaranteed accomplishments.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Myon Reader, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. There you go. Reflex Math.
Reflex Math is an adaptive and individualized computer program that nine of the district buildings use for math intervention to help our students master their math backflownancy. Teachers can monitor students' progress through reports to better help students' needs. The cost of the program is $21,564 and is funded by Title I.
Any motion for Reflex Math?
And that is a program that is being able to be used over the summer because it's a online internet-based program. So students can access it through the summer as well.
I so moved that we're accepting Reflex Math.
Second. Moved by Ms. Chabot, and seconded by Mr. Ebert. Any discussion on Reflex Math?
Why are they not?
It's funded through their title funds or focus funds, and so not all the schools have the same allocation because of funding purposes. Those schools use their funds for Reflex Math. The amounts of money that they get.
It's still a choice, though. Is that correct? There are other schools that could use this program.
Correct. So there are some that don't get as many funds as others that decide that's really, really where they want to use that fund. But majority of them is because they have more funds than other buildings have. Because it's paid for through the buildings funds, at the district funds.
Does administration do a yearly evaluation on usage of it?
Yes.
Are there any usage reports available for re-plant?
Yes, I submitted those. I don't know if it's in there.
It's interesting that, I struggle with, some schools have it, some schools don't. And we're all one district. Why, you know, and I understand about money. I understand that some of this has to do with funding, but I don't know. It's just, not just the math, it's the reading. It's like we're disjointed. And I just want us to...
And it goes back to the framework. I'm telling you, if that is the singular purpose for it, right? Because you have to have a framework in which teachers and principals analyze their data and see what weaknesses are. And if you say literacy is an area that we struggle with, then how do we move that learning forward? And it could be through questioning. It could be through writing. It could be through many lessons, you know, whatever the practice is. But we have to use the data to guide our conversations. And so I'll ask these very questions. So I'm glad to hear you all asking those questions too, because I don't want us going all over the place and doing a lot of things. Because what happens is, and it's not that these programs don't work, but it makes more sense if we can do one thing well and give schools support that they need. So that when we, you know, want to do some interventions or some PD for teachers, then we don't have this nine schools here and six schools there. Everybody is focusing in one area. But it's, but it will take a framework like what we're going to start doing that focuses our attention on these particular areas. For me, it's always going to be literacy and numeracy. And a powerful practice, one of the best ones I'll tell you from my experience is writing. If the kid can write it and it's clear, and when you look at it and you can read it without having them tell you anything, they got it, right? And so that's what we want is, and so right now, you can do it, and we hear a lot of different things. I think that, you know, well, it's kind of hard if they just stop it now because then you got to have something in place already. So you got to, you know, keep rolling with it. But that's the way that we have to go.
And our students move throughout the district so much.
Yeah.
That's very, very important, that they know.
Consistency.
Right, consistency in schools. They might be a vote for a while, and then they're going to go over to Lee Hamster or something else. So if they've got the same stuff, the same materials, it would be much easier for them.
Any further questions?
I know one of my concerns is, I'm just looking at the schools that were chosen. I know two of our schools that are, that have had lower math scores are not even on this list. And so that just mean that they're missing, to me, it seems like they're missing a big part of, if it's two math programs that are able to be ran at a school, that we're missing that. And that's data right there that we can really see that two of those schools aren't even on the list. And that's a really concern for me.
A lot of the barriers.
Walk, there is, I, I, I know, Miss Walken.
I'm here.
Sure. I don't want to hear. Okay. With, with Title I funding, it looks different from school to school because of the allocation. A lot of, sometimes salaries are included in that amount that each school has, and that has to be taken into account, or it, it may be focused, it may be non-focused on priority schools, but we do have to back those salaries out before we really know that bottom line of what can be used for supplemental instruction.
So that's correct. All of our schools, all the seventeen elementary schools that we have, actually do have funding for both programs except two. Um, their full allocation went towards salaries.
And there's a supplant issue.
I'm sorry.
Is it, and then my understanding is that if you're using title funds to purchase it, can't use district funds, because then it becomes a supplant issue.
Exactly, exactly.
That's the other complication.
So, so, like Reader is funded through the district funds, and then MIA Reader was a title, annual focus funded initiative.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Study Island.
Study Island will provide preparation for the math assessment and is designed to help students master content specified in Missouri Learning Standards. A user-friendly interface allows students to move through the program step-by-step at their own pace from any computer with internet connection. Each section has a pre- and post-test as well as topics that cover each of the Missouri Learning Standards. Topics consist of questions, answers, explanations, and lessons that address specific skills required to master Missouri Learning Standards. Study Island is completely what this. And all three high schools are using, uh, this program, and there are two elementaries that requested to purchase it as well.
I move that we reduce Study Island.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bowen, second by Ms. Hogshead. We accept Study Island. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. STAR Reader, STAR Math, and STAR Early Literacy.
STAR Math, STAR Reading, and STAR Early Literacy are computer-adapted assessments that the district uses to benchmark and progress monitoring our students' progress this new year. The supplement has been aligned to both Missouri Learning Standards as well as the Common Core State Standards. The report allows teachers to better diagnose students' needs and provide supports for individualized instruction. All the district buildings have used this program for the past three years. The cost of these programs funded through district funds is $91,570, 20%. It's like all schools use it because it's district funding, not building funding.
I move that the...
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Eber to accept the, uh, she, she, STAR Read, STAR Math, and STAR Literacy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. STAR Enterprise Accelerated Math.
Accelerated Math is a computer-based math intervention program that the district uses to help improve math students' achievement. The program is currently being used in fourteen of our buildings, is the main resource for districts' math intervention courses. The program differentiates math instruction by addressing each student's individualized needs. And the cost of this, uh, program funded through district funds, and it's based, building-based is the way those come out of district funds, is $19,960 and 19.2 cents. So every year, we gradually increase the number of, of buildings that are using the Accelerated Math, starting with all the secondary, and then each year, we get more and more elementaries onboard of this. It is, it also, um, ties into the, the benchmark, the STAR Reading, STAR Math, um, for AR and AM, uh, so we can actually assign from that benchmark test or progress monitoring where those students' needs work in AM and...
Any motion to accept STAR Enterprise Accelerated Math?
Second.
Moved by, um, Dr. Furman, and second by Mr. Eber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. STAR Enterprise Accelerated Reader.
Accelerated Reader AR is a computer-based reading intervention program that allows students to read books at their current level and assess them on their reading comprehension vocabulary literacy skills. AR is currently used in seventeen of the district buildings as an intervention program, uh, to increase our students' reading levels. This program costs funded through building level and district funds is $21,988 and 13.2.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Eber to accept STAR Enterprise Accelerated Reader. Any discussion?
This will kind of relate to the other programs too, because it's all license-based. How do you determine how many licenses each school's going to get?
Um, okay, so this is one way that I say that we're going to spend our money is the way that it was used to be done and the way we do it now. Uh, it's all always done by building licenses, uh, and then the minimum building licenses, 240 licenses per building, and some buildings have more than 240 students that use, utilize those licenses, so they have to order, let's say, A-benders or whatever amount that it is. So I did a district pool of licenses so that we can go minimum on some schools and then not waste licenses. It could mirror the, we're going to have a lot of licenses not being used because of the way we're purchasing them. So it's really saving a lot of money by going to district pool of licenses. And that's why we're doing it, and just order it as a district, like individual buildings paid for their portion of it, or experience transfer.
Thank you for doing that.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Contacted services for substitute teachers and nurses.
Earlier this year, the Board of Education expressed concern about the number of substitute teachers that we had and the lack of our ability to fill substitute teachers, substitute teachers for our buildings. Uh, we pulled a board that time where we would take a look at options and come back and report to the Board regarding that. One of those options was to take a look at a contact service, in essence, hiring an outside company that would manage and operate our substitute college system for us. They would invoice us each month, but they would be responsible for our substitute teachers. The substitute teachers would be their employees. We put out a request for proposals. We did receive three bids back from three different companies, and we took an analysis of those bids. Taking a look at those bids in comparison to what our current costs are, we believe that the, the cost of those bids are going to be prohibitive for us. So the question is, uh, why are we having difficulty filling substitute positions? And then we're going to do fix that. Just to give you some background information, in 2014-15, this past school year, the district had a total of 12,812 absences. Those absences, some did not require the use of a substitute teacher, but many of them did. Nine thousand and sixty-four of those absences were from certified teachers requesting a substitute. Of those, we were able to fill eighty-seven point six percent of those absences to put a substitute teacher into the classroom. The year before, we had fewer absences. We had eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven certified teachers absent requesting a substitute, and we had a ninety-three point seven percent fill rate. So we had more absences this past year, but we were able to fill fewer absences. So we had a lower fill rate. And we believe that there are several things that may contribute to that. Uh, one would be, um, we had anecdotally the, um, the Ferguson unrest. People talked about stress, uh, being absent, uh, there was difficulties with, um, in the community, and people often took days of absences as a result of that. The Affordable Care Act, uh, with the passage of the Affordable Care Act, any of our employees, part-time employees that were getting more than thirty hours per week also get access to our insurance program. So as a result of that, a decision was made to go ahead and to limit the number of days that a substitute could work to four days a week. In previous years, substitutes could work five days a week, and we think this is a major factor in, um, why we were not able to fill absences in the past year. If we were go to five days a week, we think that we could fill more absences in the coming year, but that would also mean that these employees would have access to our insurance program. We would have to be able to offer that to them, but they would be paying for the insurance themselves. One of the other things we believe has an impact on this, this is public school retirement system. Our best substitutes are retirees, our retired teachers. One of the decisions made by the public school retirement system is that retirees can only work 550 hours per year. So even though they would like to come back and substitute for us, once they hit their 550 hours, they are done for the year. Oftentimes, that occurs when we need the substitutes the most, which is in the springtime. The other decision made by the public school retirement system for the coming year is that retirees cannot start until they've been out for six months. So they have to have a six-month separation from the school district before they can begin. So that means that these substitutes, retirees, new retirees, will not be able to start until January. So all these things will have an impact upon us. Uh, Dr. Drusick, you just... Mrs. Drusick and myself went through the, uh, the proposals from the different companies, and we took a look at what would cost using their system, which allows teachers, anybody to be an employee of them, which means they could start right away, which means they're not limited to 550 hours, which means they had access to insurance. What would it cost for them to do that from an outside company compared to doing that same thing internally? If we were to give people access to our insurance program, if we were to go ahead and let, let substitute teachers work five days instead of just four, what would that look like? Comparing those, we believe that it's still more cost-effective for us to try to do this internally. The difference between, um, the middle company, now there were three companies, two companies had local offices, one company had an out-of-state office, so any complaints, any concerns, any difficulties, you'd be looking at somebody by telephone, by trying to make a, a conversation there. We felt that we had to have somebody here locally if we're going to take a look at an outside service. That left two companies left. We took the lowest of the two companies as far as their bids and compared that against our cost here and the Ferguson floors in school district. The difference at the end was $131,000. And we felt that was very significant, and that was at the fill rate of what we had this past year, the eighty-seven point six percent. If we were to take that all the way up to a fill rate of what we'd like to be at, which would be ninety-seven or ninety-eight percent, then at that point, uh, would be about $145,000. With that much of a difference, we think that we should go ahead, open the, the doors up for, um, our substitute teachers to teach five days a week, allow them to have access to our insurance program if they fall on board, and if they choose to pay for that. Uh, and then we need to aggressively recruit and hire for the coming year, and then continue to recruit all during the year, uh, until we have it backed up to the high nineties again. One of the things that's, I think is important to note is, the substitute pool we had this last year was actually larger than any of the previous years, with the largest substitute pool we've ever had. But we weren't able to fill all of our substitutes, and actually had one of the lower rates on the fill rate because of some of these outside factors. So we're going to try to remove those factors and hopefully become very efficient and bring that rate back up to ninety percent plus. So our recommendation to you is to reject all proposals, reject all bids, and to continue to do this internally.
I move to follow the recommendations. I'd just like to add a comment, and that is that financially, everything you say makes sense, and, and that's wonderful, but where my heart is thinking is that what we were talking about, Dr. Davis, the education of our children, and the best for our children is to have our own substitutes. I've had to use agencies, as we call them in my field, for nursing, and they come in, they get their money, and they leave, and they don't care. And that, I believe, will be the same way with teachers from outside agencies, and I think it would be a big mistake to bring that into our district. And one thing that's very difficult, at least again in the, in the nursing field, is once you get them into your building, the facility, it's hard to get them out, because it's real easy to say, instead of trying to figure out a way to, to make your staffing, it's much easier to call up and say, oh, would you send me such and such? So, thank you for staying with the district, everybody. I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
I would, uh, rather second that, uh, simply because the value of people working that are attached to the district is just so, uh, valuable. And, um, my own personal experience, I was a sub, and, uh, this is, this is the district that I subbed in, this is the district that I wanted to serve, and, uh, I just think there's an ownership there, as Leslie said, that we would not have. So it's a, um, again, thank you. I mean, we've had, we've had this discussion already, so I'm glad that you've come to this conference. You're the...
Yeah, I, I know the other, the big concern is that, I've heard from some, some substitute teachers who have asked for that insurance component. I think it's awesome that you're going to allow them to buy into what they choose to do there. That was important for some, some of them. The other thing that we also need to do is an image thing. Some people refusing to go to some schools, and somehow we need to make all of our schools a place that anyone would want to go to. There's a reason for that, and I, you know, want us to get past that. So, I know that there was some difficulty with filling some positions because some people did not want to go to certain schools. I hope we can get, get back to that.
And I'd like to say, I guess I third the, the second, and I third all of this. I think it's great to keep it in-house, ownership, you know, one district, our kids. I, I would offer a challenge, though, from, uh, my three little labor experts that say, you know, huge difference, big drop-off in substitutes when they come to the classroom. I understand they can't be like a classroom teacher, I do understand that, but we, we, you know, it's got to be more than just babysitting, and we really have to work on that. I don't know what, uh, you know, you guys are big think tanks, so I, I don't know what we could do to tweak that, and that, that's not meant, what I'm saying is a huge criticism, it's just, wow, once we've got it in-house, they're ours, let's do the best we can to, to whatever that is, from a classroom teacher to the substitute, so that, that, that learning can continue. Maybe that's it. Whatever it is. I mean, based on my experience, I walked into a classroom, the lesson plan was there for me, and I followed it. And, and the point is, is that they had a lesson plan, okay? You'd walk in, look for it sometimes, but it was there for you. And the responsibility of the sub is to follow the lesson plan. Not necessarily teach, not, not qualified necessarily to teach the particular subject, but if they're following the lesson plan that their teacher laid out for them, it went smoothly. And there, sure, there were subs that did not do that, that, I mean, we can monitor that, and that's part of the reason why in-house is important. We don't have to bring them back. And, uh... And where did these sub? McClure, right? Within the district, and mostly at McClure. And, and what, that's the point I want to get to also, I think it would be something to think about, you know, um, you know, I, I'd heard that years ago, we actually had a built-in sub-perfect school, I mentioned that to you guys. And nothing, you guys are all talking about relationships here, nothing. Mr. Brown was at McClure, he knew the kids, he knew the other staff, he knew, he knew a lot of things about how that school worked. And, uh, whatever you guys come up with, I'm, or I'm not.
She helped me out.
You know, these kids, you know, will, will learn from people that they know.
I know, for me, I was at McClure South Burden.
I know, for me, I was at McClure South Burton for at least a year, and I think it's a great opportunity for college students. So what I really recommend is that we vet our colleges, our neighborhood colleges. So we got Umsul, we got Flow Valley, it's really getting to those colleges, and maybe we can one day hire those as teachers. So we start those relationships and really get into the community and show them that that's what we're really looking for. I mean, it's a great job for college students, be really, especially those that are interested in the education field. So then we got Lincolnwood as well, so the students are there, and I think we should really just try that, and we can have a great mentor program, just subbing in colleges.
We also need to help the substitutes understand how to control or lead the classroom. Some of them, you know, may have a college degree. We had a board member, Michael Hirsch, that was a brain in chemistry, and he had trouble, and he would come and talk about the trouble he would have, he didn't sub in our district, but the trouble of subbing because he wasn't used to that. And you would not want my husband to know he's a math brain to teach a class. So we have to, you know, as we're hiring subs, we also have to look at their qualifications, and because as Mr. Ebert said, we don't want somebody in there wasting a day of the child's life and their education.
Yeah, I'll turn, and then you'll answer one question, and I don't know how they're doing it now, but I know that at the end of my subbing career as a board, I know the teachers were asking for specific subs. Do they still do that?
Yes.
And I thought they did.
Call me a time.
And so the teachers know who they want, and they assign them, I'm pretty sure. So that's a good, that's a good thing, is they build the relationships.
It helps too, if the teacher has that relationship like he's talking about. I've gone in the day before, and they've gone over the lesson plans with me, so that I've prepared the next day, or they're going to be out for two or three days, so that helps too.
Yeah.
Building that relationship of being called back. I was always called back to the same school. I agree.
Going out and doing the RFP for this has been a good exercise for the district, because it's allowed us to make some comparisons regarding insurance programs and what it would cost for us to do some things. And it made it easier to make the decision to go ahead and open those doors up and make that recommendation. And so even going out and taking a look at outside vendors, it may not have been everybody's choice, it certainly has been something that's been valuable to the district. One thing I would say is the company that we currently use for our substitute finding, our substitute calling system, which is called SubFinder, they have been bought out by another company called ASAM. And so at the end of this current school year, the 15, 16 school year, that company will no longer be in existence. So we'll have to go to a new calling system at the end of the school year. So during the course of this year, we'll put out another RFP for a calling system, and we'll go through and figure out what system we use for the following school year. The piece that we may not have addressed at this moment is the underlying part of it, and that is teacher absences. And so to me, doing in-house is an opportunity for us to encourage attendance of our teachers, but leadership is a part of that, discipline in schools is a part of that, and, you know, having served as a principal at elementary, middle, and high school levels, I know how, I knew and know how important it is to have great substitutes when you needed them. But even more was my teachers wanted to be there, so that I didn't have the problem of having a substitute, right? So I think that there are a lot of issues that we've got to deal with, but really, I want to deal with the root cause to the post of the symptom, so that we can save dollars, because I'd rather use these dollars in ways to support schools than to have to pay our money for school teachers. And if I can provide some other incentive program maybe for teachers today in terms of attendance, then let's do that, give them some incentive and morale, so I think that's important.
And I think that you just nailed it, a portion of it is that when you say you can boost morale, I mean, we've come through some really tough times, and we really do need to, to work diligently.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting a proposal to keep it in-house and provide access to health insurance for our new, for our substitutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Motion carries. Understood, serves for athletic trainer.
During the course of this year, we lost one of our athletic trainers, and we tried to replace that trainer, found it very difficult. At the end of the year, one of our other athletic trainers, and we have three, one for each of our high schools, one of the other athletic trainers, who was also a teacher, left our district to go to a different district. And so we now have one athletic trainer in-house, and we met with the athletic directors, and they were unanimous in their decision that we should go out and take a look at an outside service, because we wanted to be sure that we had an athletic trainer at all of our athletic events. And they were adamant that that's something that we needed to do. We went ahead and put together an RFP, request for proposal, and we had two companies that had bid for that proposal, and one of those bids back to you this evening. The two athletic directors who were a part of reviewing those bids, which were Mr. Kish and Mr. Roat, could not be here this evening. We have one of our new, our new athletic director, Mr. Cusnerik, is here this evening. If I can't answer the questions, perhaps that he can for us. But this evening, what we'd like to do is to present back to you the two bids from the companies, where they would provide the athletic training services, they would be responsible for these people as their employees. But in this case, we believe that this is actually cost-effective. The cost to hire an athletic trainer in-house is $28,000, that's our interest salary for it, plus the cost of benefits, which would take us to $36,000. One of our bidders is $36,000 per athletic trainer, per building, for the course of the year. These athletic training companies would provide us board-certified athletic trainers, Missouri licensed, and they would provide them for all of our activities. Any additional activities, for instance, a team went to the state meet, if we put on a summer camp, that would be done on an hourly rate, but the normal course of the school year would be done on a set fee and a set fee schedule. But they would provide athletic training services for us for the entire school year. The two bids that have come back, we have one at $36,000 per school, or $108,000 total per year, the other one is $37,500 per school, at a total of $112,500 for the three schools together. The pricing for both of these bids is good for the next three years. We'll give a one-year contract with an option to extend the contract for two additional years if the board chose to do so.
Any day, motion to accept the athletic trainer?
I move that we accept the contracted service for the athletic trainer.
Okay. And moved by Ms. Schoben, seconded by Mrs. Hogshead. Any discussion?
I was going to say, because the material's not in our board reports, am I missing anything? The actual bids themselves?
I have copies.
My other question too is, it says for all three high schools. We already have one trainer, so what's the other, why are we, why are we going with the three? Maybe that's just the title. Is that correct? It says three trainers.
Correct. Yes.
But we already have one trainer.
We have one trainer corrupting our staff.
Right.
Just to go to an outside company, and that person will no longer be our employee. The person who is that trainer would be eligible to be interviewed by this company, and this company that we are recommending has expressed an interest in interviewing that person.
But there's a disparity that that person has that job.
Correct.
So, didn't we hire?
We provided a person with a notice of employment, letting them know that we would be interested in employment for the coming year, and they had expressed an interest in coming back.
So now we're going to look at and tell them to go.
I don't need to interrupt, I am that person. I was at McClure for the year, and I came to the meeting to see what was going to happen. I enjoyed my job, and I made a great, a lot of great relationships with the students this year. I told a lot of students, you know, I was looking forward to coming back and being a part of that school. So I felt like I was thrown in a position, like, you know, my athletic director actually told me that he did not know of anything that was going on. Maybe July 1st or 2nd, that's when he told me that they were going to go ahead and, you know, look to be contracted, and then they, sorry, and then that's when he told me everything. He pretty much told me that I should probably start looking for a new job, which I felt was not fair to me. So I felt like I was put in a really bad situation, because, I mean, my athletic director wasn't upfront with me, you know, from the beginning. So that's just my side of it, and that's why I came to the meeting today, because I do love my job, and it will, you know, put me out of employment, because, I mean, we're at the end of the school year, most companies are looking for athletic trainers pretty early on, April, May, June, because, I mean, sports start up at the beginning of August, so they want to get someone hired for the school year. And, I mean, I made a great relationship with my students, and they all love me, and, I mean, it's a tough situation for me, so I just want you guys to take that into consideration. I mean, whatever you guys choose, I'm on board with that, but I just wanted to give my input, sorry, Frank Toretta.
Could we discuss this in closed session?
Yeah.
Is this a personality?
Yeah, exactly.
So I move we table this as a personality.
I second.
But I also, the concern is that I don't want to vote on this, and it says three, and that's a reason...
Well, that's why, that's what we're...
That's what we're going to start with.
All right.
And moved, and seconded, we table a motion for a closed session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? What's that?
I was explaining to you that...
It's been tabled, we'll take it up in closed session. Facilities, McClure North Emergency Asbestos Abatement. Mr. O'Neil.
This item was an emergency expenditure to assure the McClure North Boiler Project, as you're aware of, could continue to move forward and be completed in time for the beginning of the school year. Contractor began removing the old boilers and discovered they were lined with asbestos as insulation, and also the front and back joints were packed with asbestos. We had to stop the project at that point and call in the asbestos abatement and monitoring contractors that we used earlier for the asbestos removal and monitoring. This work entailed the asbestos abatement contract to remove each piece of the boiler, of the boiler, and properly wrap each individual piece for removal and proper disposal, multiplying that by three, since there's three boilers being removed. Since waiting for this meeting would have delayed the project by several weeks, and this would have delayed the project, and it would have not been completed by the start of the school year, following policy, I contacted the CFO for permission, and she notified the Board of Education President, authorized the emergency expenditure. The total amount was $42,338, due to the fact that it was an individual piece had to be wrapped, it was a little more expensive than the original asbestos removal. We did have the funds available in the bond for this emergency. The work was completed that same week, and the new boilers were actually delivered this week, and the work put in place. It's really informational, so you know what happened with that, with that situation, since it was an emergency expenditure.
Is this for an action of...
Yes. We still got to approve the expenditure.
So I move that we accept the expenditure of the McClure North Emergency Asbestos Abatement.
Seconded. And moved by Ms. Schoben, seconded by Mr. Ebert, to approve the McClure North Emergency Asbestos Abatement. Any discussion?
Yeah, the other question I have, Carrie, was, should this have been comped up? I mean, I'm not throwing darts at anybody, I'm just saying, should the, this company have comped?
I don't know, the company would, you know, we did have the services engineered, and we spoke with our engineering firm about it. Our staff, who was pretty familiar with their boilers, was aware of the situation as well. At that age, we had assumed, as the engineer and the contractor, my staff did, that the asbestos would be on the outside, which is where we normally find it, on the pipes and joints. In this particular case, like I said, it was insulated, which is really actually unusual. So everyone was kind of caught off guard by it, which we apologize for, but there was something that we couldn't predetermine.
So I assumed that when they were removing the boilers, they had tear apart piece by piece?
Piece by piece, right. That's why it was so much more expensive, because they actually had to disassemble it, piece by piece, wrap it, package it, and dispose it properly, each piece for each boiler, and so it was numerous pieces. There is one small thing that did help a little bit, the contractor actually has reduced his price by, I think it's $15,000, except it was their cost for removing the boilers, which obviously they don't have to do anymore, since the asbestos contractor had to do that. So there is some of an offset, not enough to cover it, obviously, but...
So had that caused a delay, you know, the projection involved to when you said it was unfinished?
It did not, that's why we canceled the emergency expenditure, went to the CFO and contacted the board president, so we could move forward, we're right on schedule, so this has been...
I'm a little discouraged that, you know, you hired professionals, you know, you can say it's rare, but they should have at least told you that this could happen. I mean, you know, you're in the boiler business. So, you know, it's frustrating as a board member to see this, it really is. And I know you were probably just as frustrated.
You know how I feel about that.
And I'm sure, and I'm sure we're thinking along the same lines here, you know? Yeah, it might be rare, but if you're in the boiler business, in that age of boiler, I'm sorry, they should know that there's chances for this.
And a move for it.
Thank you, thank you, Derek.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Or you go ahead and happy to do the work now.
Thank you.
Trash and recycle service contractor, no?
This is the second year of a three-year renewable contract for our, excuse me, for the waste and recycling. It's Progressive Waste, which is formerly IESI, who we've had our contract with, for services district-wide. It's $50,399.54 annually, which includes 10 months of full service at our schools and summer limited service, as well as 12 months of service, full service at our non-school locations. We've had no issues, problems, or concerns with this company, and they have done a good job for us in the past year, and we request that we renew the contract for another year.
Seconded. Moved by Mrs. Hogshead, and seconded by Mr. Ebert, to renew the contract for trash and recycling services. Any discussion?
I remember last year, this was quite, I don't know, again, Republican contractors, and I also remember that we were a little scared as a board, because the bid was so out of line, you know, so...
Yeah, they came in lower than they, they were current, and they came in lower than their current cost, and they've held to that, and next, they've, you know, again, held the cost, and next year should hold the cost as well, it's the third year of the...
Well, that's what I want to say, good job, I mean, because I still remember that bid, I know, wow, it was almost scary though, compared to some of the other ones. It was a good job.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Motion carries. District-wide filter replacement purchase.
We received sealed bids for the district-wide HVAC replacement filters purchase. They were submitted and opened on June 15th. The specification, I had all the different filter specifications for each locations, which included different sizes. Each school has multiple sizes and different types of filters. It's for bi-annual replacement filters, which means we'll be purchasing 5,310 filters of different sizes and types. If you do the math, they average about $5 apiece, which is very reasonable. We received five submissions, and the lowest, most responsible bid was submitted by Brower Supply Company for the total of $26,368.38 for the year. and thirty-eight cents for the year. We requested that they approve the contract to purchase the filters.
Same.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hogshead, and seconded by Mr. Shapow, to accept the bids, or proposal on district-wide filter replacement. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. How we get filters? Chiller replacement, Robinwood.
Actually, this should be a chiller repair with a compressor replacement. Approximately a week and a half ago, timely for the meeting, one of two compressor motors windings failed at the Robinwood Elementary School. It's about a little over twelve-year-old unit, and life expectancy is about ten, so it makes sense that it's going out at this time. There are two compressors there, so we're still being able to keep the building relatively comfortable at this time. However, if the temperature reaches ninety or above, and/or the building is full of staff and students, which is coming, obviously, the one compressor cannot handle the building properly. Due to this fact, there's somewhat of emergency that we have to address before the start of school. Due to this, we have expedited the bidding process by contacting three professional, reliable vendors that we've used in the past. We've been successful with them, and we've purchased compressors instead of calling them to make the bids on the compressors, rather than running ahead in the paper because of the time constraints. Due to the fact that we recently purchased a, this little thing, I want to explain about how we discovered we needed it, and a positive story again with savings. Due to the fact that we recently purchased a piece of equipment called a Mager, it was five hundred dollars, and test compressors in the windings to make sure that the motors are out before we replace a good compressor. So we were able to determine the compressor motor was not operating properly and needed a replacement instead of repair. But before purchasing this piece of equipment, we would have had to contact the contractor to do that work for us, and it would have cost approximately eight hundred dollars for them to tell us that we needed a new compressor. This piece of equipment has already saved us three hundred dollars in just the one use. So I'm proud of my staff for recommending that, and carrying that out, being able to work, use that equipment properly through their training, so. Also, we'll be installing the compressor using our own staff instead of contracting, as you know is a big thing of mine over the last few years. In April of 2013, we had the same issue at Combs Elementary, and we had to pay a contractor to test the compressor and to replace the compressor at the cost of forty-two thousand dollars. The bids for this project were for the compressor only, obviously not installations, and we'll be doing that. They will be performed by our professional staff in HVAC, and we will save over twenty thousand dollars by doing that. We received three bids from Dyken Applied Thermal Mechanics and Master Equipment, and the lowest, most responsible was submitted by Dyken Applied Americas Incorporated at the total of twenty-two thousand, sixty-four dollars for the cost of the compressor. Based on this information, we request the board approve the purchase of the compressor from Dyken for twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hogshead, and seconded by Mr. Eber, is that correct? She seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Repair later, Robinwood Chiller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Use of NSBA Membership Funds. We had a discussion last month, or two months ago, about NSBA, and the board voted to not rejoin the membership with NSBA this year, can again in the future. There's also a proposal by Mr. Eber to allocate those funds, so I'll turn it back over to Mr. Eber.
Well, I just thought that it was a good prudent idea, since we had voted to not join the organization this year, that we could take those funds and put it right back in the classroom. I will say, though, that, you know, unfortunately, with all the legal ramifications from the lawsuit, things like that, that it's a shame all the money that's coming out of our classrooms. So at this point, I really withdraw my motion, and just throw it back into Laura's hands, and she can do what she needs with it.
Motion has been withdrawn, and funds go back into the general fund. Any discussion?
What do you mean? It'll go back into the general fund and not, so we won't be using it for the National School Board Association?
Right.
Right? It's gonna go to the school, to the district.
I did have questions about not being a part of the National School Board Association. I think that there's some value in doing it, and as a matter of fact, I did do some research and looked at some of the things that they offer, and I thought they were very valuable. Some of them, one of the programs that I looked at, which is Q, and it's, bottom line is, it was very expensive to join that even as a member of the National School Board Association. So I don't think that that would be very smart of us to join that. However, there is another organization that's part of the National School Board Association that you don't have to be a member of the association to be a part of, and Courtney and I did some research on this, and she's gonna talk a little bit about.
So that program, that is the Black Council of School Board Members, and to actually join that, it will only be, for an individual member, it is seventy-five, but if the whole board joined, it's only one seventy-five. So we can actually still be a part of the National School Board Association, you can get some of the benefits, we don't get all of it, but at least if we're on the council, we can still get those benefits.
How much will you give your computer? The actual?
Hundred and seventy?
One hundred and seventy-five, that's it, and then we'll be a part of the Black Council of School Board Members.
So you have to be a member of NSBA?
No, not for that one. Not for that, yeah.
So is that something that you do? If that's a thing, something we can do right now?
Yes.
I mean, credit.
Well, well.
The use of the NSBA funds is what we're talking about, so yes.
Not giving it all to the school, but taking out a hundred and seventy-five, so we can at least use some parts of it and join that council.
And what would joining the council, how would it benefit the school district?
So, I just read what it says, "Membership is open to anyone interested in working to address the educational needs of racial and ethnic minority students in our communities. Members represent districts of all sizes, from urban, rural, and suburban communities. They are called on to promote equal educational opportunities for children, and identify racial and ethnic groups, to monitor their development and academic achievement, and to address the unique challenges and opportunities faced by school board members working with issues concerning these students and their families." Since our school district is eight percent diverse, I would say, I believe that that is one great organization that we can benefit from.
And also, just getting information from, on a national level, you know, I know it's great to be local, but sometimes we need to go outside of that, and I think there's benefit in looking at things on a national level. I still don't agree with, I was not one who voted to do that, because I think that overall there's value in learning, so that we can bring it back to the district, and there was some reason that we did it in the past, and, you know, I'm hopeful, I'm not sure how valuable it was, because I'm new, but I would like to even be a part of the National Association's conferences, because in looking at some of the topics that they've had in the past, and looking at what they may be doing in the future, they don't have their agenda out yet, but just looking at the research, or looking at the information that we've gathered, I think that would be beneficial sessions that we might.
Honestly, John, and I can, I'll concur with that, simply because we don't have to be a member to send one person to that, and it may be a little more expensive, but as I said, in my evaluation of the recent, I think we were, what, thirty-five hundred dollars for two of us, so it was part of the difficulty of what we received, to meet that standard, but I don't have a problem sending somebody in.
And that's what I was gonna say before we went over to that.
We don't have to be a member right now, you know, I mean, for right now, we could do that if we, obviously, I would be fine with that. I don't have a problem with that at all, I don't have a problem with joining this, I don't know the specific name.
National School Board Members. National Black Council of School Board Members.
I mean, certainly, there is information that can come from them that is specific in nature that we may, I mean, it's obvious, it's so.
So that this information could be available by working with our surrounding school districts?
So the national level?
But the amount of money that it's gonna actually cost us is not that competitive, it's just a resource that could be extremely effective, and as she says, it's national, not necessarily local, so it can pull in a lot more idea.
I know Chuck used to go to the council, I think he went twice, an endorsement before that, but what my question is, is for the hundred and seventy-five dollars, which I'm not against, but for that, what do we get? Do we get literature, do we get?
So what are the benefits of becoming a member? Connections to an expanded advocacy network, learning opportunities, learning opportunities and networking, timely information on national issue.
So how do we do the networking, and how do we do those things that they're offering us? I mean, is it just for going to the convention?
No, 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 it's online and things like this.
Okay, that's what I was trying to say.
Because, I mean, I've been on the board for four years, and I've always been an advocate of online training, of work-study sessions, webinars, partnering with our surrounding school districts, being incorporated into the professional development plan that's introduced to district-wide, and it should also include participation of the board, but it's never happened. And for me, just to join an organization, just to join it, when, you know, because I made it always very, very clear, I think it's a waste of district dollars to send one person, or even two people to a conference. This district works better, more effectively and efficiently, when everybody's on the same page, when all of us are seeing the same material with Dr. Davis, and the staff and the teachers throughout the district, because then we're all receiving the same information, we're all having, being part of that discussion. Sending one or two people, in my experience, has never worked, it's just a waste of dollars.
I think one of the things that the board may need to do, and I'm not sure if you've done this in the past, Courtney and I went, we learned a lot, but we haven't had an opportunity to come back and share it with you all.
That's.
How do we do that? How do we bring it back and share it with everyone else on the board? So I agree with what you're saying, you send one or two people, and then we go, and yeah, we learn information, but then we have not been able to give that information to the rest of the board, have the opportunity to do that.
Well, that's a simple solution. I mean, that's a simple solution. If we choose to do this, those that represent, they go, must come back and sit down and give us their, and teach us.
I want to do that, and I think that's, there was a request on the floor tonight asking, like, you all, what did you learn? What did you all learn back?
We can always, we're gonna have a retreat, it could be part of that.
That's a good idea. Stand work-study sessions.
We can make work-study sessions.
If we bring all of work, or either one of them, we bring information to talk about what we learned, as in a work-study session, which is helpful.
Now, we need to do that very consistently, right?
Those are ways, those are ways we can.
Otherwise, Rob is absolutely correct. It just.
Another one, a motion.
We'll make a motion.
I like, I move that we join the Black?
The National Black?
National Black, I'm sorry, I forgot.
National Black Council of School Board Members.
Yes, and also that we look into sending one or two people to the national conference. Two motions?
Is that two?
That's two motions.
Let's just do the one first, the first one.
Okay. I move that we join the National Council of School Board, National, why can't I say National?
I don't know.
National Black Council of School Board Members.
Of school board members, for a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved by Dr. Thurman, that we join the National Council of Black School Board Members, and seconded by Mr. Brown.
Now, after your other motion, before you make your move.
Any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries.
And about December, they will send, I think that's when they send them out, I could be wrong, but about December, they send out what the topics are going to be, and so we could look at those topics and see who's interested, what we would want to go see or send, and also there's, in September or October, in the fall, there's a Black Caucus of what we've just joined, and that's a convention that might also, we maybe utilize that information too. So there's two different things, but we need to get the information, and then before we make a motion of what we're sensing, I think, in my opinion.
I agree.
Next item on the list is Policy 1091 Evaluations.
Do I need to make another motion? The second motion was for sending someone to the.
That's why I just said we wait and see what.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta have the information first.
Make, give information to say only if there's something that.
Right. We'll look at the information and then talk.
Once you have information, then we can make a motion.
I really thought.
There we go, there we go. Dr. McMillan, Ms. Samuel.
This evening, we're here to request that the board approve an updated policy, or repeated change to 1091 regarding evaluations. We have two changes to it. One discusses where evaluations will be kept at. Since we'll be using the NEE system, the electronic system from University of Missouri, the Network for Educator Effectiveness, they will have an electronic way to maintain those evaluations, so we wanted to add that to our system, or to our policy. And then also regarding the units of instruction, and how that would be handled. Originally, when the policy was developed, we did not know from DESI how many, or how frequently, units of instruction would have to be evaluated, and we now know that we'll be doing that on an annual basis, so that's reflected within the policy. And also, one other section where it talks about student performance measures, will be a significant contributing component of the teacher's evaluation, and that's a part of the DESI regulations.
DESI required us to put that language in our policy. You're wanting a motion? I move that we accept Policy 1091.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Hogshead, and seconded by Mr. Eber, to accept the changes to Policy 1091. Is there any questions or discussions? My only question is, just wanted to make sure that the FFND is on board with this, as I talked to Dr. Davis earlier today.
Yes, we had a lot of conversations.
That was my first question, so, as long as you're happy with it, I'm happy, so.
Most of it was aptus.
Aptus, yes, that was my understanding, so.
So no, I'm not happy about it, but.
I was gonna say.
We don't have a choice.
But in this particular case, there's really not, like you say, no choice, so. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Need a motion to adjourn to executive session. Moved by Dr. Thurman, and seconded by Mr. Eber, to move to executive session. Ms. Hogshead.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye. Yai, yai, yai.
Sit with your book, Dr. Thurman.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming tonight, appreciate it.